All right, we'll call to order now. So I'll go ahead with the sunshine, thank you. Very helpful. So this is the Wednesday, August 5th, 2020 meeting of the Franklin Township Planning Board. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. It's been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of the Franklin Township Plannings Board would pose a risk to the health, safety and welfare of the public. As a result, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers at the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format is being conducted utilizing utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the state of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting and the planning board was posted in the township's official newspaper, The Courier News, on the township website, the township cable station, and on exterior doorways of the municipal building. There's no detail the following means of public participation in this meeting, linked to the virtual meeting via WebEx or a call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials was made available via the township website and/or by appointment in the municipal building, formal action will be taken at this virtual meeting. As a reminder to board members, we ask you refrain from asking questions till the applicant has presented all witnesses and exhibits. I will open the floor to the board questions after the applicant is finished presenting. In order to reduce potential background noise, we ask that you mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or to provide a vote. For the public, for those members of the public that are watching via WebEx, please indicate in the chat section whether you desire to provide input. Please provide your name and address at the appropriate time in the meeting township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you will have the opportunity to comment. For those meetings of the public, for those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number at the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will unmute the phone lines and yes, you take your turn in providing input, you will be asked to provide your name and address. Okay, so with that, we now have the pledge of allegiance, so. Got the flag shot, excellent. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Do we have any oath of office? All right, then we can just do the roll call.
I just give me one second, Mike, I just want to make sure we do have a trying to make sure, no, we don't need call, I just want to make sure there's no other callers in the attendee list. Yeah, I just moved her over. And then just two more things on public input. Two recently added features, there's also a raise your hand function in for those that are participating in WebEx. For members of the public, again, if you could, you can raise your hand and we'll acknowledge you at the appropriate time. And for those who are calling in, you can now press star three and that'll also raise your hand. And again, same thing, we'll acknowledge you at the right, the appropriate time for questions or comment. Chris, can I watch you roll call?
Okay, one, Mike, I just want to tell you Jim, Jim Clarkin cannot get in, so I'm going to, he's calling me on my phone, so I'm going to place him on speaker on our phone.
Hi, this is Jim Clarkin.
Yes, well, we're just used to roll call. Okay, roll call Ted Chase, he said he didn't have power. Carl Howe?
Here.
Mahir Rafi?
Here.
Cecile McIver?
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Sorry, remember, let me unmute.
Jennifer?
I'm here.
Mans Ray?
He's muted.
Hi Sam. Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert? Carol Schmidt?
Here.
And Chairman Orsini?
Here.
And let me just check, we do the call-in user, I want to make sure this isn't Councilman Chase. Do we have any board members calling in? We have a 609 area code, is that one of the board members? I guess not. That's what's next.
All right, so the next, you okay, Mark? So the next, the next item on the agenda is the minutes from the regular meeting of June 3rd.
I moved 2020.
Second.
Seal moved Bob seconded.
Carl Howe?
Yes.
I'm here Rafi?
Yes.
Did you say me?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Charles Brown? Charles?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt? Yes. And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. So we have no resolutions, so we'll go right to the discussion and we actually have a minor sub, which the minor subcommittee is myself and Cecile. Robert Metler was a member, unfortunately, duty is passing. We will have to canvas for a replacement, I'll get to that, but we'll get to the, I think, Mark, do you want, do you want me to do that first and then we're going to go do the minor sub? That's what we decided, right?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would say get, appoint the officially point the third member and then we, then that subcommittee can have a quick discussion of the minor subdivision application.
Yeah, so I think since the chair gets to, you know, appoint the, the, the members of the minor subcommittee, these, just as a prelude, these happen quite infrequently. There may be one or two a year at best, and they're very simple. The one tonight, for example, is a subdivision for an open space lot, we get a couple of those. You know, sometimes in open space acquisitions are made and, and there's a house or something where, where the person is going to have life rights or whatever, and the rest is preserved as open space. Or, or there's some very minor lot line adjustment or something like that with no variances or whatsoever. These meetings are generally held just before the major, the, the, the main planning board meeting, maybe 10 or 15 minutes before and, and then, and then the vote is, you know, the, the recommendation for the minor sub is, is, is brought to the, is brought to the board. So I was wondering if Mahir, would you be interested in being the third member of the minor subcommittee?
Yeah, I would like that very much, thank you.
Okay, that would be great, so we'll, we'll, we'll appreciate that, so.
Thank you.
Be myself, Seal and Mahir.
All right, so why don't we, we'll do a quick meeting of the minor subdivision committee. And again, as the chairman said, this is, what this minor subdivision committee does is reviews minor subdivisions and what that is, is basically subdivisions of three lots or less, and it doesn't involve any, any variances, so technically there is no notice requirement. And the subcommittee usually meets before the meeting and then subsequently reports their decision to the board afterwards. So to the subcommittee, I'm going to do really high tech, you did get the, the report emailed to you, but I'm going to show you on my screen here. Really high tech here, but it's, it's a property off of Elizabeth Avenue. It's about five acres in size. The property owner owns two adjoining lots. And what they're doing is the house is in the front and in this red is this little portion that it's really a minor lot line adjustment. They're going to be adding this portion to the lot in front. And they were, they're going to keep that and live on it. But the portion in the back is the, where their septic field and I think they have some sheds and stuff, they want, they want to keep that. And then the rest of the property, approximately 75 to 80% of the rest of the property is going to be acquired by the township for open space. So again, it's, it's two lots now, it's going to be two lots with the minor lot line adjustments and no, no variances are created by the changes in the lot. That's basically the, the substance of that application. Anybody, anybody, any members of the, this is just a meeting of the subcommittee, any members of the subcommittee have any questions or comments?
Are there pros and cons involved? Can you go over any pros and cons?
Well, I mean, I don't think, there's, there's no cons because it's, again, it's a, the house exists and all they're doing is, let me take a step back, so the, the proprietor owns two adjoining lots. His house is on the lot in the front, the lot in the back that he also owns has some accessory structures and his septic field.
Right.
So, and what the proposal, proposal is, is that the portion on that back lot that has the septic field and the sheds is going to be made part of the lot in the front. So, so, you know, there's one house now, there's going to be one house in the future. The portion in the back, rather than being subdivided and having, you know, two or three homes on it, is going to be conveyed, going to be acquired by the township for open space and it joins other open space. So, you know, there really is, there's no cons, no cons whatsoever. It complies with zoning and it's going to allow for the preservation of the property. So I think are all pros.
Open space buying these lots outright or are they just buying the rights?
My understanding is, my understanding is this is an open space acquisition, not, not farmland. So farmland preservation is when they just buy the development rights, my understanding is the township buying it for open space in its entirety.
Okay, and so the, the homeowner will have his own center lot with his septic system completely owned by him.
Yes.
The two side lots on each side are what are being bought by the town.
Well, it's, it's one, it's, it's, it's going to be, it's two lots now, it's going to be two lots in the future. The lot in the front will contain the homeowner's house and septic and accessory structures. And the lot in the back, it basically kind, it's kind of like a flag lot that wraps around the homeowner's lot. That's the lot that's going to be conveyed to the township for open space.
Okay, well, I think this is a good thing. The town should do this. We, we should grant that lot line adjustment.
Any other comments or questions by the committee?
No, I agree, I, I think that's, you know, wonderful that there's open space now.
Nothing for me, sounds good.
Okay, so, so somebody want to make a motion on the committee?
Okay, I'll make a motion to, to approve the lot line adjustment so that the town can acquire the open, this open space land.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that's it, and since the planning board heard it happen, I don't think I need to report to the planning board what just occurred. So that's, that is it for the discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so thanks, Mark, so that was very efficient. So now's the public comment portion. So I'll entertain a motion to open to the public and, and this will be for comments, general planning comments on related to the hearing that we have tonight for Mylon Builders. That will have its own public discussion, so if you're here for that, please wait until that application is heard. If you're here to talk about any other planning issue, this would be your time, so I'll make, I'll make a motion to open to the public.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hey, the meeting is open to the public.
Okay, I've unmuted all of the callers. Anybody have any non-public hearing related comments to make? Going once. Twice, not hearing anybody, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, in that instance, I will make a motion to close the public portion.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries, so the public portion is closed and now we move to our one hearing for the evening, which is Mylon Builders PLN 20 dash 00005. And I believe, Mr. Linus?
Mike, Mike, just with, just before that, based on my dealings with the applicant, with my job, I'm going to recuse myself from this board application.
Thanks Carl.
Okay.
Yeah, we, I don't think we'll, we'll have anything else tonight, so you get an early evening.
Stay safe, everyone, have a good night.
Take care.
Oh, okay. All right, so let me unmute Mr., Mr. Linus. Mr. Linus, are you there? Mr. Linus? Mr. Linus? I've unmuted him, much sure lies.
Yeah, he seems to be connected twice.
Here I am, yeah, I don't know what's going on.
All right.
Hi Franklin. Franklin is here.
Frank, no, you're good, you're, you're, you're good. I mean, we hear you even though you're connected twice, you don't have an echo, so I would say perfect is the enemy of the good, so.
All right, I'd like to be visible too, I'm, I'm on my computer, is there any way to do that?
No, for some reason, it's not allowing me to make you a panelist. It looks like your, your other professionals, I can all make panelists, but for some reason, I can't make you a panelist.
Okay. Are they panelists or they here?
I have Mr. McDonough. I have the people you indicated. I have Wayne Ingram. I have Rocco Campnella, Dominic DeSantis, John McDonough, and yourself. That I can, I can, I can make all of them panelists if you wish.
Yes, they're potentially panelists, I intended to introduce all of them, but only have Wayne Ingram and John McDonough offer testimony unless the board of the public wanted question the other people.
That sounds fine to me, Frank. I don't know that there's, there's any issue with the fact that we can't see you, but I would say, I would say go ahead and proceed.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, my name is Franklin and I'm pleased the applicant Mylon Builders in connection with this particular application. First thing I'd like to do is compliment your, your professionals, Mark Healy, particularly Mark Healy and Christine, as well as the board. We're in a coronavirus crisis and for umpteen years I was used to making presentations in person. And now we all find ourselves doing virtual meetings and I've done a number of them. But again, I want to compliment the board for, for convening at this time, especially in light of what happened yesterday, that massive storm that left me personally without power at my home, so I'm back in my office with this situation. Okay, by way of introduction and background, the applicant Mylon Builders is looking for preliminary and final site plan approval with variances to construct a 9,963 square foot warehouse and office building located in Heller Park. The exact location is 16 Heller Park. And they also want some associated loading zones and parking. There are two pre-existing non-conformities for which we're seeking variances. We're looking for a variance from minimum lot area and a minimum of lot frontage, both of which conditions pre-existed and are non-conforming. As I stated before, I have four potential witnesses, the first witness who I hope will carry the ball for the board and the public is Wayne J. Ingram. He's our site engineer, our civil engineer from E and LP. He prepared the, the plans that are before the board this evening. John McDonough, licensed planner. We hope John will be able to, to give you the planning and zoning justification you need for the variances. In the event there are any questions from the board of the public, we have available Rocco Campnella. He's our project architect and he submitted floor plans and elevations as well as Dom DeSantis, who's a principal of the applicant. The applicant is a contractor and Dom DeSantis owns the applicant and he's the owner of the property. So I think we can provide whatever information the board may need and the public may need, hopefully to get this application approved. So unless there are any questions of me, I'd like to call to, I'd like to call Wayne Ingram.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to swing him in?
Uh, yes, Jim.
Raise your right hand, please. You silently swear, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Wayne Ingram, 140 West Main Street, Hybridge, New Jersey, 08829.
Let's proceed.
All right, Wayne, you want to give the members of the public who are involved in this virtual proceeding the benefit of your background qualifications and experience?
Sure. I'm a licensed engineer, surveyor, planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed as such for over the last 10 or 12 years. Appeared before over 75 different municipalities, I don't believe I've had the pleasure in Franklin, but most locally Bridgewater, Hillsborough, Manville, Montgomery, just to name a few.
Frank, he, he, he's accepted, given his qualifications, he just needs to know he's licensed. And just may I ask what capacity you'll be offering testimony tonight, which of the hats?
I would say probably just the engineering license will do.
Okay. Fantastic.
Okay, thank you Wayne. In your capacity as a licensed civil engineer, are you familiar with the Franklin Township Land Development ordinances and the land use law?
I am, yes.
All right, I told him with you wherever you are and to file with the board exhibits, do you have any exhibits with you?
If I can share my content, I can put our first exhibit up if that's acceptable.
Yeah, you've been, yeah, he's been made presenter.
All right, let's see if this works here.
Sorry Frank, cut you off there.
That's okay, I'd like to present all of Wayne's exhibits, mark them and then he could testify.
Sure.
Okay, what's the first exhibit?
This is our, sure, our, our first exhibit is a colorized rendering of the site plan that was provided to the board.
Okay, I'd like to mark that A1.
Sure. I don't know, we have to introduce site plans, the actual site plans that have been submitted as exhibits or not. Not what the board's procedure normally is.
Okay, exhibit A2 would be the entire site plan package?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Is there any other exhibit that you'll be testifying to?
I've just switched over to the third exhibit, which is just a, was an architectural rendering of the building and the site, 3D rendering.
Okay, and is there any other exhibits that you intend to testify to?
I think that should be it.
Okay, very good Wayne. Would you bribe for the board and the public the existing features and the site plan?
Sure, so just switching back to the exhibit A1. The property is currently a vacant lot. Partially wooded, lightly wooded. And, and within the rear of the lot, we have some wetlands and a stream feature which were delineated on our, our survey and plans. What you have in front of you is the, again, the colorized rendering of what we intend to construct. The, the brown structure towards the, the front in Heller Park Lane is the, the proposed building. The, the smaller front half is the two-story office. The rear is the taller, single-story warehouse area. The southern end of the site, you can see the driveway, two-way access driveway to get into the site. We have 11 parking stalls adjacent to the building in front of the gated rear. And then when you go into the rear of the, the property, we have an additional two stalls right behind the gate and I believe another eight along the rear of the site. The reason for the additional pavement, such a large area is that as vehicles come into the site and want to use the bay doors of the warehouse area, that they have adequate turning movements to accommodate that use. In the very rear of the parking area, we have the proposed trash enclosure. The light green areas that you see basically along the frontage, along the northern side and along the eastern edge are the three stormwater basins for the project. The front two basins are infiltration basins and the rear is a detention structure.
Okay. Other than the two pre-existing non-conformities for lot area and lot frontage, are there any other variances that we would be seeking or that would be required with this application?
None, that's correct, everything with regard to what we're proposing is compliant, the two variances are simply the pre-existing conditions of lot area where we have about two acres where five acres is required and a frontage of 177 feet where we've 300 is required. We've sized, during the other, to be consistent.
Right, okay. You also brought with you the architectural exhibit?
Correct.
All right, you want to testify with respect to that exhibit?
Sure, so as I mentioned earlier, this is a 3D view of what the proposed building would, would generally look like. The front half of the building is a two-story office area and the rear larger portion is a single-story warehouse building.
All right. Did you have the opportunity?
Go ahead.
Did you have the opportunity to review with, with our client the various staff reports that were issued in connection with this application?
I have, yes.
All right, I'm going to refer the board and the public to the July 21st, 2020 report of CME Associates. I think everybody will be pleased to know that all of the items in, in B, section B, and that would be on page two of six are acceptable, but you're going to provide testimony as to item number 12. Item number 12 says the site plan notes, there's an existing four-inch PVC vertical invert, et cetera, you want to testify with respect to that?
Sure, so the, the, the property previously had a septic system which was abandoned and overseen by the health department. That just happened to be a leftover pipe from that abandonment, so it doesn't go to anything, it's already been dealt with. And then there's nothing attached to it that needs to be addressed with the health department, who I also believe already reviewed and gave no comment to the application.
All right, and you'll comply, our client will comply with all of page three, the CME report, but you're going to give us some information on D1 landscaping and F2 environmental impact.
That's correct. It's our intention overall to comply with all of the comments from the review letter, but specifically related to the trees. It, it's true that based on the trees we're removing, which I believe is 19 trees, the calculations of the township ordinance require 229 replacement trees. We are proposing, get an exact number, 19 replacement trees on the property. In an attempt to try and get a little closer to that, I think our, our intent is to work with staff to try and put some additional trees in the wetland buffer in the rear of the site to basically fill some gaps and try and enhance the wetland area. But, you know, certainly we don't want to do that to an extent that we, we choke the trees out, we want to make sure they have ample room to grow. So regardless, we're going to be left with a substantial deficit that will have to be replaced as part of the Township Tree Fund. My discussions with, with the board planner today indicated that it's basically $30 per tree compensation and we would be certainly amenable to complying with that for any trees that we cannot provide on the site.
Okay, and how about item F2 on page three?
So in terms of our outside agency approvals, we currently have pending with the NJDEP both a wetlands LOI as well as a flood hazard area determination. We have already submitted to the DNR Canal Commission and their determination was that we don't have a regulated flood plane on the site, so we're expecting the same concurrence from the NJDEP, but we'll provide that, that documentation.
Okay, and, and can we and will we comply with all of the items on page four of six of the CME report?
Yes, we can, I'll just address a couple other items in section F. We did have a misstatement in the environmental assessment, we're not proposing any encroachments into the wetlands area and we can revise that. and we can revise that. And, uh, regarding item six, uh, we're amenable to the conservation, uh, area easement, which, uh, would follow the, uh, wetlands transition area line, uh, as delineated on our plans.
Okay, and just an observation, G1, uh, the property in question, this property is two acres. Property is currently vacant and was a residential property with a single-family dwelling that has been demolished. So basically, the, what we're doing if this board approves this application is we're changing a pre-existing non-conforming use to a conforming use, is that correct, Wayne?
That's correct.
Now on page five of six, will comply with each and every item of CME's, uh, report?
Yes, uh, most of these are revolving around the stormwater system, um, and we've also received many similar comments from the Delaware Canal Commission, um, and have already addressed those and, and, um, uh, would do so again with the board, but we've found that the basins essentially as designed, uh, still function even, uh, factoring in all of these changes.
All right, and that would include the, uh, two items on page six of six. In essence, we're complying with all of the comments regarding stormwater management, correct?
Yes, we will.
Uh, miscellaneous section eight, uh, regarding some details, you'll comply with that?
Yes, we will.
Okay, you want to bring the board and up to date on our outside agency applications and, uh, the status?
Sure, uh, we have county planning board approval, uh, we have, uh, complete applications to the NJDEP, um, but no response yet, um, in terms of comments on those applications. Uh, county soil conservation was submitted, we received comments and resubmitted back to them for approval. And again, the DRCC, uh, provided comments to us, which we have addressed. Uh, we won't receive any further, um, reply from them, uh, until we provide, uh, uh, the outcome of this, uh, this hearing and the resolution to them, uh, for them to take it to the next stage of review.
Okay, the environmental commission had a couple of suggestions or comments. Uh, they were concerned about the removal of, uh, trees, uh, they're, they're referencing the tree fund. I think you've testified to that. Uh, they're suggesting, uh, willow trees rather than those specified for replacement, is there any issue with that?
Uh, where appropriate, I mean, we're not going to use that, I don't think, for the buffer, but for the deciduous trees on site, we can, we can certainly look to make a substitution.
Okay, uh, did you have a discussion with our client and our client's architect regarding, uh, the suggestion, recommendation regarding solar panels?
Uh, we're going to look into, um, seeing if it makes sense to make a roof modification to allow for more panels in the future. Uh, we're not proposing them at this time, uh, one of the issues being, um, it's, until you really know what your usage of the building is, it's, it's difficult to appropriately size, uh, such a system. Uh, but we're so certainly open to it in the future, and we'll try and incorporate the ability to do so in the future in the, in the, uh, architectural plan.
But it's not part of this application nor part of any approval we're seeking?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, very quickly, Patty Elliott from the Health Department on July 20th, 2020, issued, uh, issued a report saying she has no objection to this application.
Correct.
Casey and Franny of, uh, DPW had one comment, he said the utility plan doesn't indicate the size and location of the, uh, service line meter pit, you'll comply with that?
Yes, we'll provide that.
Okay, and I'm looking at Mark Healy's July 1st, 2020, uh, re- 2020, 2020 Report Memorandum, and I think you, ah, parking. He has one issue that I'd like you to a- address, and that's the number of parking board through.
Sure, um, so, in an earlier version of the plan, uh, we, we had a compliant amount of parking. Uh, a couple of those stalls got removed, we made a change, um, but it, it would be our intention to revise the plan to provide the two stalls which are currently missing. Uh, basically, we would put one in the corner by the, uh, trash enclosure and another in the striped area, uh, nearest to the gate, uh, just so that we have compliant parking. Um, in terms of the location, I believe we have eleven stalls which are in front of the gate and the remainder are behind it. Uh, we certainly believe this is adequate, um, you know, eleven stalls based upon, uh, the applicant's need for use of the offices is, uh, certainly, uh, sufficient, and, and obviously, you know, once the facility is open, the majority of the other spaces are for employees who will go into the gate and exchange their vehicle for a work vehicle or such. Um, so we don't believe having, you know, the, the remainder of the stalls behind a, a security gate, uh, is a concern for, for adequate parking, and it is really, it's necessary to put them back there, uh, so that we, you know, have a secure site, uh, during nighttime hours.
Okay, do you believe that the site plan that you designed is, is adequate and up to engineering standards?
Uh, yes, we do.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Okay, thanks, thanks Frank, thanks, uh, Mr. Ingram. Um, you can go ahead with your next witness again, um, because the board will hold the questions until all your witnesses are, uh...
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, uh, John McDonough, are you here?
Yes, Mr. McDonough is there here. Um, Frank, just so you're aware, I, um, I cannot make him a panelist either, so we won't see him, but we will hear him. So let me unmute him right now.
Mr. McDonough, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, would you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
Solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God.
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, everyone, my name is John McDonough, M.C., capital D-O-N-O-U-G-H. My business address is 101 Gibraltar Drive in Parsippany, New Jersey.
All right, John, would you give the board and members of the public, uh, who are participating, uh, the benefit of your background qualifications and experience?
Sure thing, I am a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. I am a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is our national certification. I testify before boards such as this throughout New Jersey on a nightly basis, and have been accepted here as an expert before both boards in Franklin Township in the past. My license status is current and in good standing.
Thanks, Mr. McDonough, I would recommend that he be accepted.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. He has a licensed planner, uh, John, are you familiar with the Franklin Township Land Development Ordinances and the?
Yes, I am.
Uh, do you want to take the board and the public through your presentation?
Sure, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, I did prepare a packet of, uh, visual exhibits. If we can get them on the screen, great, if not, I will just, uh, bypass them. Um, if I'm able to share, uh, screen share, I will, if not, I'll, I'll back off.
Yeah, unfortunately, since, um, since I wasn't able to make you a panelist, uh, you can't, you won't be able to present.
Okay. It, it's not a problem, because I think the, the planning proofs on this particular application are relatively straightforward here. Uh, I think we're, we're, uh, very clean from a zoning standpoint. We're, we are here in the N1 zoning district, that is, uh, industrial district, and we're looking at a use that is a permitted use in the zone, so the applicant is not, no relief relative to the, the use or activity on the site. No bulk relief related to the mass and scale of the building, the parking, the setbacks, the coverage, all substantially comply, or in fact do entirely comply with your zoning ordinance. As you've heard through counsel at the outset, the only relief relates to what is an existing lawfully platted parcel in the community. The minimum lot size requirement in the M1 Zone District is five acres, and this is a two-acre parcel. Uh, in fact, many of the parcels around this particular property are also similar in size, two acres. Uh, so in that regard, we're not looking for something that is atypical or unusual in the area. Likewise, we're looking at a property that has a frontage geometry of one-hundred-and-seventy-seven-point-five-feet, whereby three-hundred linear feet is the minimum required. Again, this is a, an existing long, longstanding condition, uh, and a platted lot that has, uh, that is, is lawfully existing and compatible with the other lots in the area. I would offer that our applicant has offered a design response to the scale of this property, to the extent that any relief the board grants here can be granted without creating any substantial hardship or, or impairment, negative impact to the surrounding neighborhood. This is an industrialized area, this is a predominantly industrialized area with much larger industrial-type buildings, both to the north and to the west of the subject property. This is a site that is remote from residential uses, nearest dwellings are well over two-hundred feet away, uh, I'm sorry, twelve-hundred feet away to the east. And also, this design response is sensitive to the Franklin High School, which is to the south and well over five-hundred feet away. The development package that our engineer has put forth before you, again, provides for a building mass and a parking mass that meets the programmatic needs of our applicant here, who is simply looking to locate its, uh, construction business. Will have the typical office functions of bidding and estimating, and the warehouse component with the storage of equipment and materials associated with the construction practice. Again, all completely permitted within the zone district. From a planning standpoint, the statutory negative criteria are met here by virtue of the fact that there will be no substantially detrimental impacts on the surrounding properties, notwithstanding the undersized nature of the property. The applicant's design response does not constitute overdevelopment or over-intensity of use on the particular piece of land, very small-scale develop, development, and in that regard, no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan, which, again, is intended to avoid overdevelopment and, um, over-intensity of use. All said, this is a very good application from a planning standpoint, and even though you didn't get to see it, uh, the statutory criteria are met, and clearly the site marries very well within the, uh, the land mass that is before the board. I would offer that the applicant's burden for approval is met here, the statutory tests are met, and in that regard, from a planning standpoint, I would offer that planning approval is warranted here.
All right, John, uh, just one, one additional question, uh, is this a C2 ver- are the variances C2 or C1?
I would, uh, say the primary relief here is related to the C1, that this is an existing condition, relates to practical difficulties associated with the longstanding condition to, of the property. I would also offer that there is an element of C2 here, to the extent that, as you heard through counsel, this property is currently classified as a, as a residential property. That's its, its last, I'll say, legal use of the land. That is discordant with the current zoning, which is industrialized, so in that regard, I would also offer that development of this tract in an industrial nature moves the needle more into conformance with the zone plan and the zone scheme, and in that regard, represents a better zoning alternative for the property, which goes towards the C2 balancing test, whereby the benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh the detriments.
All right, thank you, John, I have no further questions.
Mr. Linus, I assume that's, um, that's your last witness?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest is, uh, seeing if there's questions or comments from the board first, and then we can open up, uh, the entire application to the public.
I agree, Mark, so, uh, will entertain any, any questions for either, uh, witness from the board at this point?
I'd just like to say, Mark, it seems, um, Mike seems like a good use for this particular property.
Thanks, Bob, yeah, I, I myself didn't have any questions, the only one I was going to ask was, you know, how they plan to address the tree, uh, contribution, which was, which was explained very well. Um, and so, um, oh, Mr. Ingram, in your, in your comment about the willow trees from the Environmental Commission, I'm pretty sure that they only mean to use those maybe in the wet areas, uh, certainly not as, you know, a general screening. Uh, that would be my, my read of their, of their comment in, in our packet, so, uh, but other than that, I don't have any, 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 any.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I wasn't sure if the engineer responded to the fire prevention report.
Uh, yes.
And the Sewerage Authority report.
Thanks, Jim, yeah, both of those too, I think the, the, the fire prevention was just, uh, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know that I have, uh, that I've seen those particular reports. Um, if there were any comments in there, I'd be happy to address them.
Yeah, uh, Joe Linus, do you have those?
Uh, no, I do not, Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh, so, so maybe I can, I can sort of, uh, well, it's easy to summarize fire prevention. I, I don't know that I want to read you the, uh, Sewerage Authority report, but I could if need be. Um, fire prevention, uh, they have one comment, well, two. Uh, one, one of them is boilerplate, which is they reserve the, to make additional comments, and the substantive comment is, the gate must have a Knox padlock for fire department access.
And that was in the engineer's report as well, and we will comply. Yep.
Um, Jim, how would you suggest we treat the Sewerage Authority report?
Well, let me, yeah, make, me, I, I think these are, they have to satisfy the Sewerage Authority to connect. So, I don't think we need to get into their, all of their technical requirements. Uh, we generally don't, uh, they, frankly, they just need to work it out to Sewerage Authority. Whatever requirements they have, they have to satisfy them.
I would echo what Mark is saying, and if for some very unusual reason, there was an issue, they'll come back.
Yeah, and, 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 uh, you know, fortunately, of course, we, we, we don't have Carl, who, who might be able to comment a bit better on some of this, but, um, none of it looks to me, uh, not that I'm a Sewerage Authority expert, uh, by any means, but none of it looks, uh, untoward from, uh, you know, what, what they've asked in past applications. But, um, Mark, if we could furnish, uh, both, uh, Sewerage Authority and the, um, fire, fire, uh, John House's report, uh, fire prevention to, to the applicant, that would be, that would be great. But I wouldn't anticipate any issues meeting any of those right here.
The only question, Mr. Chairman, would be, is whether there's a pump station proposed?
There was not. I don't believe.
Yeah, I, I didn't mention any of that in the Sewerage Authority comments.
The reason it was brought up is because there appears to be pressure tight according to the authority report.
Our understanding was this exist, it was an existing force main that we would be tying into, so I think it was the note that there was an existing system, but again, we'll, we'll have to comply with their requirements.
Great.
Yeah, yeah, that seems to be, yeah, thanks, Jim, that seems to be the biggest, uh, the, the, the biggest one of the comments. That isn't otherwise, uh, pipe dimension or something of that nature. All right, any other, uh, any other questions from you, Jim?
Only, are they going to use barbed wire?
I'm, so... I don't see that noted on our details as being proposed. Uh, on the sixth and chain link, uh, we did barbed wire, yes, I'm sorry, looking at the gate.
I just don't know how the board feels about that, that's all.
Any comments from the board on the barbed wire for the fence? I mean, you did say construction, right, uh, would going to be the use? Um, I imagine that it's barbed wire, because you don't want people going into the construction area and you don't want, uh, obviously deter any theft, et cetera, right?
The owner has had issues in the past at the prior location, and just like, he's looking to keep a, a secure yard.
Yeah, do, do any other board members have comments, or have, you know, objections, I guess, to a barbed wire fence?
This is Charles, I do, I think aesthetically, um, it's not great for the area. Uh, also, it's nearby a high school, wouldn't want, I understand security concerns, but perhaps there's something a little more attractive we could do to secure that location instead of barbed wire.
Well, I, I agree with Charles for this, uh, aesthetically, something, and even for, for the safety perspective.
Yeah, I agree with you, it, it, I think technology today, uh, that we have with cameras and other forms of security can probably be applied to, you know, eliminate the barbed wire. We don't want it looking, uh, you know, a certain way, and I think, I, I get the purpose, but, but consider, uh, alternatives to that if possible.
All right, Mr. Chairman, Dom, are you, are you there somewhere, Dom DeSantis?
Yeah, let me, let me, uh, make sure he's here.
Dom, here.
Okay.
Dom, are you okay with no fire?
Excuse me?
Are you okay with no fire?
Okay, you keep breaking up a little bit.
Yeah, Frank, Frank is breaking up, so I'll interpret that, which is the board suggesting that we would rather not have a barbed wire fence, so we're
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
It's fine. I kind of agree with you a little bit, it might take away a little bit from the look. It's just the other building that I was in, I got robbed quite a few times, so but no, it doesn't really necessarily have to be there.
Okay, thanks, I mean, we certainly understood your reasoning. I think, I think the thing, the thing was, you know, safety, it is close to the high school. I mean, we obviously don't, don't want any security issues, but we also don't want anybody hurt. And again, as you say, the aesthetics, you know, perhaps with security cameras and other features, there's, there's ways to, there's ways to have good security, you know, kind of, kind of without that feature.
Yeah, I'm preparing the witness, please, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Raise your right hand, sir. Dom, let's declare that the testimony, you just gave us the truth, the whole truth, and then you brought the truth to help we got. Yes, I do. Thank you.
All right, any other board questions for any of the witnesses, which now number three? If not, I think we can make a motion to open to the public. I will second, all in favor of opening to the public on this application? I oppose, a meeting is open to the public for comment on this application only.
Okay, so what I'm going to do, Mr. Chairman, is I'm going to select all of the callers, and I'm going to ask if anybody, any of the callers wish to make a comment. So be careful with background. Okay, I've unmuted all of the callers. Anybody wish to comment, question? Does anybody have a
one family, the second floor was a second family, and somebody subdivided it, made two apartments on the first floor.
I'm not hearing anybody wishing to speak, Mr. Chairman. I think that was just background noise. Mike?
Oh, sorry, I was on mute, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to close the public portion.
Move to close.
In favor?
Hi.
I oppose. Okay, meeting is closed to the public on this portion. Frank, if you have any final comments before we make a motion?
Oh, sorry, did I, I may have muted him.
Yeah, he's muted.
There we go, Frank, you're on.
Okay, I said, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be very brief. This is a good application, it's taking a prior non-conforming use and making it conforming to the zoning. The two variances that we requested are pre-existing. The applicant has agreed to comply with just about everything in the staff reports, and I think it's worthy of your consideration for approval.
Thanks, Frank. Any other final board comments or questions? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so Christine, if you can pull the board?
Neil McIver? Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Wasafa Mansrey?
Yes. Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Carol Schmidt? Yes. And Marcini?
Yes. So the motion is approved, and the application is approved, so thank you, everyone. Thank you, all the witnesses, and Frank?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, any final business before we close?
Nope.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor?